Is my meeting ordered? I have the security access.
President, pleasure of the agents. All stand, hand over your cards, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, will you take role, please?
Councilmember Calmit.
Here.
Councilmember Senegal.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Still.
Here.
And Mayor Landau.
Here.
All present.
Okay, we have presentations now. The Orange County Fire Authority, Division One Chief Covey, and Emergency Services Coordinator Sergeant Gray, emergency preparedness.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council, City Manager. We've been asked to come up and talk with you a little bit. Obviously, there's still a lot of conversations going on after what we've experienced in the past month. So, a lot of questions about what's going on in the community. So first, let me give you a little background about me. Thirty-one-year fire service veteran, okay? While we're an all-hazard fire agency, we kind of have to be a jack-of-all-trades and a master of a few because there's just too many things I ought to be mastered at. So one of the things I really focused on was wildland firefighting. I've been, in my thirty-one-year career, I was kind of doing some math the other day. I've been over two million acres in fires. So when it comes to seeing these things, I'm qualified all the way from everything on the ground to the command system, as well in the air, in helicopters and airplanes. So I've got a lot of experience on these fires and what they do and how they do it. There's a science behind it, right? I don't get to look at mountains anymore and just see how beautiful they are. I start looking at them and say, okay, this is how this is going to burn. That's what that's going to do. It's kind of ruined me for some of that, but hopefully when I retire, I can try to forget that. So what we've been asked to do is kind of come up and talk about again, a little bit more on that science stuff that I talked about last meeting, and how things come together to create the environments that what occurred in Altadena and in Palisades. And how it's really not going to occur here, okay? It's a very set things, a balance of nature have to come together, fuel, weather, and topography, okay? Those three need to come together in a way that creates a fire environment like that, okay? We don't have the topography here. We don't have the weather here. Those winds you're talking about, an excess forty, fifty mile an hour, much of those winds were eighty to a hundred miles an hour. We don't have those kind of environments here. Now, do we have a fuel bed here? Yes, there is a fuel bed here in Gum Grove Park. That's what we'll talk a little bit here. But for a fire to start in Gum Grove Park and have the disastrous potential of an Eaton fire or a Palisades fire, it's not going to happen. You're not going to have an eighty mile an hour wind, right? That doesn't occur here. And if it does, it occurs in a way going the other direction because it's a hurricane. It's not going to be an offshore Santa Ana wind that's going to blow it into the community and start the community on fire, okay? If you think about it, the brush bed has to be big enough to be the kindling for a campfire. You don't just put logs on a campfire and light the big one on fire. It takes something to get the big one started. That is an adequate fuel bed with the topography to drive it and the wind to push it. And that just doesn't occur here. We're not lined up for that. Are there places in the county that will support this? Absolutely. We have experienced it. Nineteen ninety-four Laguna fire, the freeway complex fire. I could go on and on. There are places that we've lost hundreds of homes. But that is not the scenario that you face here. But is there some potential there in Gum Grove Park? Absolutely. So by myself and Sergeant Gray, we're going to kind of talk about some of the things that we're doing in Gum Grove Park or have done before. Brush clearance. Last January fifteen, city staff worked with our qualified biologist to assess the park and make recommendations for brush trimming to reduce fire hazards as well as protect the wildlife. A more extensive brush clearance is scheduled for January twenty-seventh. OCFA in the past has actually brought our hand crew down here to assist the city with their contracts when we felt like there was some more work that could be done. OCFA has actually helped in the past with our hand crew to come down here and do some of those mitigations. One of the things you, one of the elements you have to try to remove from the fire environment is humans, right? Unfortunately. Not all fires are caused by natural causes. Some are human caused. So when we, I frequently talk with, with the police chief about when red flag warnings are coming. I'll send him a note, hey, red flag's coming because we get a heads up on it fairly early, and then he'll work with his staff to close the park. Let's remove that human hazard or element to the potential of a start. So we start talking about long-term strategy. We're going to do a comprehensive fire safety assessment that was asked by Councilmember Steele or Vice Chair, Vice Mayor Steele, sorry. Which board am I talking to today? Pro Tem, thank you. And we are going to do an assessment of Gum Grove Park, Long Beach Wetlands, and Heron Point. This will include vegetation assessments and fire hazard mitigations. We are going to collaborate with the city of Long Beach in these assessments. And then we, I just got a meeting invite today. We're getting a community engagement group together to look at this holistically across the board and ensure we're doing everything that we can to be prepared and/or mitigate as much as we can within our means any potential threats coming out of Gum Grove Park. So that's kind of on the fire side. Sergeant Gray's going to talk about a little bit on the emergency planning side.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Chief Covey. Mayor, council members, city staff, thank you for having me. I'm going to talk a little bit about emergency preparedness resources for residents first. We'd like to help our residents stay informed and prepared. So I'd like to highlight a few of the resources that they can use. Alert OC, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar or heard of it. Your cell phone numbers and home phone numbers should already be in the system. But just to verify, I would, I would ask everybody, encourage their constituents, to go to alertoc.com. It's a countywide resource, but we have control over it here locally so we can push it out as needed. So you can sign up for those alerts at alertoc.org. The next one, Nixle, my favorite because you can do it so easily. Text your zip code, in our case, nine oh seven four zero, to triple eight triple seven, or visit nixle.com, but you'll get real-time updates from your city staff. So that's actually my favorite. Social media, you may have heard of Seal Beach PD's social media. It's doing pretty well.
It's right there behind Orange County Fire, right?
Right. It's number two. But we're closing in. Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, just at Seal Beach Police. We push out stuff quick, very quick. I know Councilwoman Senegal called. I think you saw the, when we corrected that LA County alert that came out pretty quick, and a lot of people were going back and forth on it, so it worked out great. Additionally, I'd like to encourage residents to create an emergency supply kit. You probably heard a lot about that with the LA fires. Have an emergency supply kit, have a family emergency plan, and resources and checklist for all of those can be found on Ready OC's website, another county resource, readyoc.com. A lot of quick checklist for pills, medications, things you don't normally think of, pet food you may forget, an extra leash. And then lastly, I'd like to remind residents that the city is currently in the process of updating our local hazard mitigation plan, a key document that identifies hazards in the city and serves as a foundation for obtaining federal grant funding to mitigate those threats. So if you're around five years ago, you probably remember that, but there's a lot of outreach sessions. As part of this five-year update, we're hosting several public outreach meetings and a community survey that just recently went live on our city website. And it'll be posted continuously on our social media to gather feedback on perceived hazards from the residents. It's, a big piece of this is getting the residents' input. It's not just us writing what we think, but it gives them a, gives them a voice. In conclusion, we share your concerns and remain committed to proactive prevention and preparedness. We appreciate your feedback, and we'll continue to provide updates on our progress. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question?
Please.
Is it appropriate to ask a question?
Depends on the question, sir.
The, I know the CERT program, the city's got a CERT program as well as Leisure World.
Correct.
Correct. Is there any possible way we can involve somebody from Leisure World to be involved in the hazard mitigation plan with us? Is that a suitable thing or not?
Already done. They've already been listed on our matrix, and some of the folks over there were included.
So you're way ahead of me, as usual.
You're too kind, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. Sir. I just want to add that as the representative on the Los Ritos Wetlands Authority, I've already had a conversation with our executive director with regard to both the Seal Beach portion of the wetlands, and he's going to be contacting the, the land swap deal on the Long Beach portion is done, but the property is still owned by the oil company. And so with regard to mitigation and brush clearance and palm tree trimming, he's going to have discussions with those folks as well.
That was not Yosa.
Definitely not Yosa.
And if I can make one comment, Chief Covey, especially last week, there was a little bit of outbreak fire right off the six oh five, four oh five, twenty-two, and then OCFA responded so quickly. By the time we noticed the fire in our neighborhood in College Park West, it went from black smoke to immediately white smoke. Went over the freeway on-ramp, I could already see a couple trucks were already out there, and then by the time I got down, then there was already, the helicopter was already flying by. So your responsiveness was amazing. So kudos.
Thank you, appreciate that. That was a challenge you wanted to get to because we shut down both freeways. That goes all the way to the governor's office, as our law enforcement partners know. So, you know, getting to it was difficult, but obviously we got there, made quick work of it. That was part of the upstaffing, right? We only had our high watershed coming. We had three additional strike teams, extra helicopters. You know, we're launching a world even to the four oh five, six oh five, but that's the intent of it, is knock it out. Let's get it out as quick as possible. They already jumped the freeway in three different places. We didn't need to jump it again and have it get into a threat to College Park.
You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
I have a question. On that fire, the Rossmore interchange, there was no notice to stay off the freeway, like Caltrans didn't hit the sign like an alert, you know, avoid this freeway instantly, or we didn't get messages in? Just how can we?
Well, I can say I saw it driving up the four oh five. I saw a sign that said brush fire at, or actually, I came up to twenty-two, sorry. So I don't know what signs you saw, but I know someone assigns the alerts where.
So even on like social media, Insta, X, some of those, where we get notices like, hey, avoid, this freeway is down, don't come up here. I mean, just because you can get, if you got diverted off that freeway, I mean, a lot of people got diverted into the side streets, and it was quite a while to, obviously. But maybe just on, if we can use our social media when we have an event like that to, don't get on the freeway, avoid this, stay off the surface streets, don't go if you don't need to go, because it just helps less cars in your way, you know? And so, just a suggestion.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for all you do.
You're welcome.
Okay, community-oriented policing team homeless outreach presentation. Chief Henderson?
Good evening, Mayor Landau, council members, city manager and city staff. Thank you tonight for giving us the opportunity to talk about the Seal Beach Police Department's response to people experiencing homelessness. I kind of want to set the stage here for how we got here, what it is we're trying to engage in a dialogue with the community about. Homelessness is a complex societal issue. We've been faced with a lot of challenges when dealing with this issue, and our goal tonight is really to help to work to bridge any information and perception gaps that there may be. At the Seal Beach Police Department, we practice community-oriented policing, and a fundamental principle of community-oriented policing is listening to community, understanding their concerns, gaining an understanding of the characteristics of the quality of life issues that are affecting them as well as the homeless, and working to find responses that serve all the parties involved, all of our stakeholders, so that we're trying to address these issues in a thoughtful manner. Last year, the Supreme Court passed a law called the Grants Pass case. We're aware of it. We've integrated it into our, into our response. We've gotten a lot of questions since that time. So over the past several months, our community-oriented police team focused on persons experiencing homelessness, and they're going to share their conclusions with you. What I would tell you, what we did find as, rather unusual circumstances, that particular case law didn't really address the issues that we deal with in Seal Beach, but you'll see from the presentation, the scope of the, of the issues that they deal with. Finally, our goal here really is to engage in a dialogue with the community, to have a back and forth, to understand the quality of life issues that are addressing our residents as well as the person's experiencing homelessness, and trying to bridge those gaps and find a way forward so we can continue to address, again, what is a complex societal issue. So with that, I will turn this over to our community-oriented policing team, Officer David Railbrook and Officer Kendra Owen. Take it away.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, interim City Manager, Gaiago City Staff, and all those watching at home. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Officer Kendra Owen, and this is my partner, Officer David Railbrook. We're both on the community-oriented policing team. We have put together a short presentation in regards to persons experiencing homelessness. Next slide, please. In this presentation, I will discuss the definition of homelessness, how the law applies, and the approach the Seal Beach Police Department takes, and the availability of resources. Next slide. P E H stands for persons experiencing homelessness. These persons do not have permanent residence or shelter and may be living on the streets or in vehicles. Each person who is unhoused has their own unique and specific story, and there tends to be a variety of different reasons why a person may be unhoused. The city of Seal Beach has a small population of P E H. Due to Seal Beach being a beach city and being located in between two larger beach cities, our community tends to be a pass-through city. We often contact people who are on their way, on their way to the neighboring cities and just passing through. Seal Beach Police Department has three quality-of-life officers, two of which are myself and Officer Railbrook, who are part of the community-oriented policing team. As members of the cop team, we patrol the beaches, Main Street, and Old Town over the summer months due to the increase in beachgoers and visitors. During the remainder of the year, our duties transition from proactive patrol to quality-of-life issues throughout the city. A large of our, a large amount of our time is devoted to assisting people that are unhoused. The point-in-time count is a census conducted every two years. The last was January of 2024, where there were approximately seventy-three hundred who were experiencing homelessness in Orange County. During this count, Seal Beach had twenty-nine unhoused persons on that day, which is point zero zero three nine percent of our total population. We believe the true number of the unhoused to be less than ten based on our daily activity and contacts with people. The point-in-time count may have been inflated on that specific day due to weather and other encampment cleanups from surrounding areas, along with just people passing through. Here's a slide to compare our point-in-time count numbers to some of our neighboring cities and the officers assigned to the QLO position in those cities. Some of our neighboring agencies have clinicians. The clinicians are non-s sworn employees who work with the QLOs and assist with shelter and resources. As you can see on the slide, our unhoused count is significantly, significantly, significantly less than our surrounding cities. Here we have a chart of calls for service between 2022 and 2024. Overall, our city has a low percentage of calls related to unhoused. As you can see here on the slide, Seal Beach Police Department received around twenty-six thousand total calls for service in 2022. Of those, about one thousand were related to unhoused, which is about four percent of our total calls for service. In twenty-three, we received around thirty-one thousand total calls, about three point six two percent were related to unhoused. And in twenty-four, we received around thirty-one thousand total calls, and two point two three percent were related to unhoused. Here's some information regarding the law. Prior to June of 2024, there were case law that prohibited cities from enforcing anti-camping ordinances unless there was an available shelter bed. In June of 2024, the Supreme Court ruled in the Grant Pass versus Johnson that cities can now enforce anti-camping ordinances on public property even when the homeless individuals have no alternative shelter. It is important to understand that being unhoused is not criminal. What is considered camping? The city of Seal Beach has a municipal code listed on the slide which prohibits camping such as paraphernalia, tents, and such on public property and public right-of-way. This does not apply to private property. Persons trespassing on private property are subject to penal code violations, which would require the owner of, to be a victim and willing to press charges for trespassing. I'm going to hand it over to Officer Railbrook.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Honorable Mayor and Council and City Staff. Thanks for having me. On this slide, we want to talk about when it comes to our response to persons experiencing homelessness, the Seal Beach Police Department takes a compassionate approach. We focus on both public safety and the well-being of individuals experiencing homelessness, and we work with the Orange County Healthcare Agency and prioritize building rapport with persons experiencing homelessness to connect them with the resources including shelter, clothing, toiletries, bus passes, hospitalization, and food banks, amongst other things. Each situation is unique, and when we contact people, we may need to assess if they need medical or mental health services. However, not all unhoused persons need mental health services. We contact persons experiencing homelessness, when contacting persons experiencing homelessness, it requires them to want the resources that are being offered, and we cannot force people to accept help and go into a shelter. And ninety-nine times out of a hundred, they're going to say no. And hopefully that hundredth time when we ask, they say yes. Enforcement actions are taken only when individuals violate laws such as trespassing, theft, or vandalism, and have refused assistance. It is important to note that the unhoused persons have the same rights to public spaces as any Seal Beach resident or anybody visiting our city. Next slide, please. When we have instances of individuals who set up structures or block public sidewalks or access or have a large amount of property, enforcement action will be taken. Individuals are given notice verbally and via signage, like the example on the slide, to collect their property, and will literally tape this sign on their property so they're made aware of it. Refusal to comply with will result in enforcement action, and property may be removed and stored for up to ninety days. Next slide, please. We often get calls for persons sleeping on private property and from concerned citizens, and in these instances, it requires the owner of the private property to contact police for assistance. Officers can contact the individual and document a verbal advisement of trespassing, and if the individual refuses to leave or returns after being advised, they may be arrested if the owner is willing to press charges. A trespass letter can be kept on file for Seal Beach, by Seal Beach PD, by, for businesses that request enforcement action be taken during non-business hours for private properties. Some available resources to us are Yale Navigation Center, which is in Santa Ana. It's the only shelter that Seal Beach Police Department has access to, and I know some of the council members have toured that facility. During inclement weather, other shelters may become available, but at this moment, there are none. Once a week, the Orange County Healthcare Agency Outreach and Engagement Team works with the cop team with us to contact persons experiencing homelessness, and Outreach and Engagement Team will help with shelter bed reservations, DMV identification waivers, social security benefits, and medical benefits, things that we don't have access to. The psychiatric emergency response team, which is also known as the PERT team, they're made up of clinicians that respond with officers to address mental health-related calls and conduct risk assessments and initiate involuntary hospitalization when necessary. Another resource is two-on-one. It's a county resource that connects people in need of social services such as housing, job placement, food, and health insurance. And anybody can call that number. Next slide, please. Some other additional resources, we built relationships with our neighboring agencies, including the Long Beach Veterans Hospital, Long Beach Police Department's QLOs or quality-of-life officers. Helmet Property Management has been very helpful, especially with stuff along their property line and in the riverbed. Edison and Caltrans as well. And these agencies allow us to work together to help persons experiencing homelessness as well as assisting with encampment cleanups. Some challenges that are things that we face, we do face challenges when trying to help persons experiencing homelessness. Again, the biggest challenge is getting individuals to accept help and shelter. Each day, we receive an email from the Yale Navigation Center informing us how many shelter beds are available, and which usually ranges from zero to three beds. When a person does request a shelter bed, we fill out a referral form and an email is sent to Yale, and when Yale accepts the referral, it may be the same day or even several days later. So another challenge is then going to be relocating the individual hours or days later when the referral is accepted. And it is a difficult, it is always difficult to locate persons when they do not have a phone or no way to be reached and are often moving from place to place or change locations. And on top of that, they may even change their mind in that time period. Just some things for our citizens to take note of when to call for help. When sometimes we receive calls merely that a subject is unhoused, here are some instances when you would call police for assistance. Someone is sleeping on your property or blocking a walkway, someone has set up a structure or a tent, they're causing a disturbance or appear to be under the influence, maybe urinating or defecating in public, trespassing on private property. Some persons tend to talk to themselves out loud, which that alone is not a crime. However, if a subject is making verbal threats or displaying aggressive behavior, we will respond and are happy to protect our community. In conclusion, we're in the process of having all our officers attend quality-of-life officer training. This is a training that will help officers provide support and resources for persons in need, and we will also continue our efforts with the community through outreach and education. With our continued effort with working with the Orange County Healthcare Agency, it allows us to build rapport with unhoused, and in turn, we hope to have the greater utilization of the resources being offered. If there are any questions, we'll take them.
I have one question. To be more specific, you know, we've had a situation in Old Town where an individual has repeatedly refused services and continues to be somewhat troublesome in the community. Is there any further issues that we can deal with, with an individual like that, that would mitigate that particular situation?
I think, I think if, again, if, if there's, they're causing, or they're creating a criminal hazard, you know, to that element, then we would address it. But if somebody's, you know, merely.
There.
There, then there's, you know, we try to take that compassionate approach with everybody. You know, we really want to drive that home. It's, is that, that's the approach that we take.
I mean, I think that's, you know, something that in all of our districts where it happens that we wrestle with because, you know, we're not, we're not putting homeless people in a van and driving them over the city line. So we need to understand how much leeway that our officers have to deal with some of the situations that are, you know, fairly troublesome. Thank you.
First of all, I just want to recognize the, the culture you have around this and the sensitivity, and I want to compliment you on that. I think it's important, the way you do the outreach, and you guys really seem to have a good attitude about it. It's a really, it's a difficult situation, so I want to appreciate that. Of the ninety-nine percent that refuse help that's offered, are you able to share some of the top reasons why? Just.
I wouldn't say there's a top reason. I would just say they're not interested. Sometimes there's rules at shelters that people just don't want to follow. So some people that are more interested in shelter, we can put them on the list and get them in there, but for the most part, people kind of want to just live their life the way they want to live it.
Okay. And in that case, you just have to walk away? I mean, what?
Yes. We try and build rapport with them so that eventually they can kind of trust us a little bit better, so that they can potentially see a future in going into a shelter, but a lot of times, it's just not something they're interested in.
The other difficult part is, again, we only have access to one shelter, so maybe somebody's been to that shelter before and had a bad experience or negative experience at a shelter, and so for them, it's troublesome to want to go back there.
And then what happens to the stuff that's stored for ninety days? What happens after that? Does it?
So if it, yeah, it can be destroyed. It depends on the situation. So everybody's property is different in terms of if it's soiled, like something that's soiled, or if it's hazardous material, we're not going to take that. We're going to, that's immediately going to be disposed of. If it's something of value, then it gets stored, and we give, you know, we give them a property receipt, and they're able to come collect their belongings. But just like any property that's abandoned property that we take. But just like any property that's abandoned property that we take in, not just from persons experiencing homelessness, but whatever we find in the city, we only hold it typically for 90 days, and after that, it can be auctioned off.
There are some cases where they'll reach out to us. They're extending their stay, or they're incarcerated for something. They're trying to get their life back on track, and these are their worldly possessions. So we'll hold on to them longer. But it's all about establishing the relationship that these officers have with them to know what's going on and relay that to our property clerk. And then that's also part of the reason why they want to go to shelters, because they only take so much property there. And they don't want to depart with their worldly possessions, because that's all, for some cases, that's all they have. And they don't have means for getting back or communicating to us, hey, this is what I'm trying to do. So it makes it kind of difficult at times.
Thank you.
The vast majority of my neighbors kind of believe in the, for some reason or other, that homelessness is a crime. And that just because they are homeless and out on the street, that they should be arrested and removed. And, you know, you see that guy over there, he's homeless, you should go pick him up. And so, I mean, that's kind of the message that we need to get out there, that homelessness is not a criminal offense. So we have services for those people. I did a session, I'll mention it a bit later on, with a club in Leisure World, and that was one of their comments. So, you know, why don't you haul away the homeless people? And it's just like, you know, it's not that simple. They're not breaking the law at all. And they, they're, they may or may not want to be there. They may be very comfortable where they are, you know. Anyway, I appreciate the work that you guys do. You kind of touch humanity at a spot that most people turn away from. And so that's, that's admirable.
I do have a question, just for the record. Because near the College Park West, Leisure World area where the 22 Wests is, along the San Gabriel River, often I'm sure you get calls or questions wondering, does Seal Beach work with other agencies along that river? And can you mind speaking about that? Or which agencies should we call if there's maybe homeless people along the river or?
So the riverbed's a unique situation.
Very complex situation. You have multiple jurisdictions in one area.
LA County is responsible for the riverbed. But it's also in Long Beach is the area jurisdiction behind like the nursery kind of Seal Beach. But then there's also Los Alamitos. And it's all these jurisdictions. And then if it's near the freeway, which that area specifically is near the freeway, then that's a Caltrans issue. So if there's people who are camping underneath the freeway, you'd want to call Caltrans.
Okay.
If you were to reach out to us, we can go out there and send some, quite often, I'll send them emails. Some people that have called in, hey, can you go see where this is at? And it'll follow Long Beach, the Caltrans, whoever. And we have the connections to call them and let them know. But the entire bike path Long Beach has taken the lead on because it's through so much of their city. If there's anything on that trail, we can reach out to them and they'll handle it all the way from the town center all the way down to Marina Drive.
Well, that's great.
So it's been nice just having one agency do it because then there's not conflicting statements. If we told someone, hey, you got two days, and Long Beach told them, hey, you have a week, that way it's just all covered under one. And they'll give us a call like, hey, just so you know, we're starting our cleanup. These are the days we'll be in the area, and we'll go out and assist and do a lot too. But if you see something, if you reach out to myself or our team, we can get in touch with the right entities to make sure it gets cleaned up or at least.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just have a couple of questions. So the 29 P E Hs that we have here, are they like our regulars?
No, so that was a point in time count, and it happens every two years. It's through the entire country, I believe. But for Orange County, it's a specific day in January that they choose. I believe it. We were working that day and worked with them. They just kind of go out and count people. But it happened to be very cold the night before, so it was warm. So a lot of people kind of come about, and there was a little more than normal. I would say we're closer to 10.
Okay.
People will pass through, and even if they're just passing through, but we happen to contact them when they're passing through, then they're in our city, so they're counted towards our count, but they're not actually living here.
Okay, so we have about 10 regulars. Yeah, I know, I've seen a couple that I see all the time. So there's one guy in particular. So I don't know if the Grants Pass case changed this, but he walks around with a massage table so he can, so at night, when he's ready to go to sleep, I mean, he breaks out his massage table, I'm assuming he's sleeping on it. Is he, is that breaking the law at that point? I mean, can you guys contact him and tell him to move on or?
So we do know who you're talking about.
He has been contacted.
He's been contacted several times. He's refused resources. We're still trying to get there with him. You know, he's, he's made references to the fact that he's going to move on. And so we want to give him that opportunity before we take any kind of enforcement action.
Okay, and then do we have any violent people at this point? No, all pretty, okay.
Anything that is of that nature, we're pretty Johnny on the spot with that and deal with that right away.
Okay. Again, I want to echo what Councilwoman Senical said. We appreciate you guys. It's got to be difficult and heartbreaking at the same time, but I'm sure rewarding when you do get positive results. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, fleet modernization plan, management analyst Sabo.
Good evening, Mayor Landau, council members, and interim city manager, Gaios. My name is Sean Sabo, I'm the management analyst with the Public Works Department. Joining me tonight is Shane Sillsby, CEO and founder of Sillsby Strategic Advisors. Several months ago, the city brought in Mr. Sillsby and his team to provide us with their expertise in evaluating, developing, and implementing a multi-year fleet modernization strategy. This initiative aims to align our operations with industry best practices, establish a strategic plan for modernizing our city fleet, and ensure we develop a clear pathway to meet regulatory compliance. Before I pass the microphone over to Mr. Sillsby, I'll, I'd like to take a few moments to walk you through some slides that will provide an overview of our city fleet and highlight the importance of this comprehensive analysis. Next slide, please. The Public Works Department is responsible for managing and maintaining the city's fleets of vehicles and equipment. Our services include vehicle acquisition, routine maintenance, repairs, and each vehicle's eventual disposal. We also oversee two key fleet-related funds, the auto maintenance fund, which covers ongoing expenses such as tires, oil, fuel, replacement parts, and any internal or contract vehicle repair work, and the vehicle replacement fund, which is used to acquire new vehicles once existing ones meet our replacement criteria. The fleet, the fleet management is handled by a dedicated team consisting of our fleet maintenance program manager and a skilled mechanic. Together, they ensure that vehicles used by the police department, marine safety, public works operations, and city hall are well-maintained and operational. The city has a diverse fleet that includes more than 100 vehicles and pieces of equipment, ranging from passenger cars and motorcycles to all-terrain vehicles, watercraft, heavy machinery, trailers, and portable generators. Our primary goal as a department is to provide a cost-effective, reliable fleet that supports the efficient operation of all city departments, ensuring that they have the tools they need to serve the community. Next slide, please. So why did we conduct this analysis? An effective fleet modernization strategy is all about maintaining a balanced aging cycle for our vehicles. And this brings several important benefits. First, it helps us minimize repair and maintenance costs. By replacing vehicles on a regular schedule, we can better predict maintenance needs and avoid expensive breakdowns. Plus, the newer vehicle is more fuel-efficient. On average, we've seen a yearly increase of over one mile per gallon, which translates to a significant savings on fuel. Another key advantage is safety. Generally, newer vehicles are equipped with advanced technologies like forward collision warning, backup cameras, and automatic emergency braking. These features will protect our operators and reduce the city's risk and insurance claims. And not to mention, they can translate into a decrease in repair costs as well. A well-managed fleet also ensures predictable disposal values, meaning that we can maximize the resale or turnback value of our vehicles, getting the best return on investment. Financially, the strategy allows us to spread vehicle replacement costs over time, creating a stable and consistent fiscal impact. This helps minimize unexpected expenses and maintain financial stability. It also benefits our staff by providing them with a newer, more efficient and comfortable vehicle, increasing employee satisfaction. Lastly, as we move forward, the strategy ensures that we have a pathway towards meeting the state's current fleet mandates, which went into effect in January 2024. It also prepares us for future regulatory requirements. We'll dive deeper into what those requirements are at a later slide. Next slide, please. So what are the overall goals of this analysis? This strategy was designed to assess the current condition of the city's fleet, outline near-term actions, and drive ongoing improvement. At its core, the strategy focused on reducing lifecycle costs by targeting high-maintenance vehicles and optimize how we as a city use our existing fleet. This will help lower the total cost of ownership and cost per mile, making the fleet more cost-effective over time. Another key priority is maximizing the use of our existing fleet while also evaluating all vehicle types by life cycle group. And we'll cover the definition of each of these life cycle groups in it more in detail during a later slide. The strategy also examines optimal timing for vehicle replacement while also maximizing resale value and efficiently managing depreciation. A comparative analysis also was conducted of minimal versus optimal investment strategies, ensuring that the city makes well-informed decisions and maximizes long-term value. And again, the strategy includes a pathway to ensure we meet regulatory compliance as we move forward. And with that, I'll now turn it over to Shane, who will walk us through his methodology and some of his key findings.
Thank you, Sean. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members, city staff, Shane Sillsby. As Sean said, I'm a consultant to the city to help you with this, but I also had 20 years in public service on the government side, including your county's Public Works Director, where I did this for 1,000-vehicle fleet as well. So Sean covered the why, the what, and I just want to go through the how on this real quick. So these are the things we did as part of the analysis, right? We took a look at your existing inventory to dive into all the vehicles you have, roughly 100 vehicles. We looked at what the existing replacement plan criteria, we're not going to get into all of this, 50-plus-page report, if you want to see it, happy to do that, answer follow-up questions as well. But the existing process is basically to look at the vehicles every year, see what the worst vehicle is, and see what you can do about it. Can you afford it? And then try to get one, or two, or none replaced. This is a potential shift in that. We'll also provide criteria based on industry standards and then specialize for the city on what the replacement schedule could be. Did an audit of what it costs to do all of this, so you would know annually what that would be. And then we developed a replacement strategy for you with a couple of different alternatives, which also includes that compliance pathway. What did I tell them? Next slide? Okay, sorry, I just, point over there. Okay, got it. So here's your replacement criteria. But as Sean said, first, we developed life cycle groups for your fleet. So we looked at all the vehicles and we said, okay, how can we break these down to look at comparable life cycles so we can group things for consistency? Standards, obviously, a more standardized fleet is more efficient. So this is the breakdown we had, right? The categories you see on the left. So the police, probably no surprise, has the majority of your vehicles between pursuit-rated and general use. And then you can see the other categories we established. You do have a boat. We didn't get into a lot of details on your boat. You'll replace that one, you know, doesn't float. But the rest of the vehicles, we have a different way to look at that. So industry standard, just when you go in to look at fleet replacements, is about seven years per vehicle. That's what we look at generally. But that doesn't include looking at the life cycle group. That's just a general statement. So what we did here is we looked at the life cycle groups, and we worked with your fleet team and your departments to say, okay, what's unique about Seal Beach and your vehicles that would create an adjusted replacement plan versus just a straight seven years for every vehicle? And what we found here is because your geography is a little bit smaller than a normal city, your street miles a little bit less, your vehicles can last a little bit longer. With the exception of the vehicles that experience marine conditions, right? Those last less because you have exposure, for example, your lifeguard vehicles. And your police vehicles, although five is less than seven, some of the industry standards, sometimes replacing those vehicles even as soon as three years. So there's a variation there, and we've tried to hit the sweet spot with these. That's why you see the different ranges. And then when we looked at the age, we also needed to look at the miles. So you end up with a both condition for replacement. So when a vehicle hits a certain age and it hits those miles, triggered for replacement. Okay? Next slide, please. We'll get back into more of this. So what does that mean when you translate all of that, overlay it on your fleet, and then say, how much does that cost? And we've got, again, data to support this. But we looked at the original purchase price of all those vehicles. We escalated those. There are two costs there. As Sean said, we looked at a minimum, maximum value, or investment strategy. It really comes down mostly to the police interceptors. The city was getting a pretty good, consistent rate on those, and we didn't want to overinflate that. So if the city was able to obtain those rates going forward, that's kind of the replacement cost, one. Both of these are escalated plus, plus outfit costs. If we apply the escalation and what we think would happen if we just went out and bought it today, that's replacement cost, two. So you end up with a little bit of a range there. I can jump into that further if necessary. But this is the allocation that comes out of the analysis and the initial work. Thank you. Now, breaking that down into numbers, you can see over each year what's happening in number of vehicles per life cycle group and in cost per life cycle group. So if you want to look at this, you can kind of see where the costs are hitting. But the takeaway is, probably no surprise, based on the replacement schedule, police utility vehicles and your lifeguard vehicles are the, they comprise most of your targets for replacement. And then thereafter, those comprise most of your costs of the replacements. That's all this is trying to tell you here. Next slide, please. So one of the benefits Sean said is on addressing your O and M costs, your operations and maintenance costs. So this is the empirical data out of the analysis. Basically says if you implement that replacement plan, about five years in, you look at a delta there of about $65,000 or so, which is basically, it's the cost of another vehicle. So just by doing a good replacement plan on your O and M, you can save the cost of a vehicle, basically. That's the theory. Now, what we are reminded is that that doesn't mean you're doing $65,000 necessarily of less maintenance. You're moving from reactive maintenance to preventative maintenance, so your repairs might be less costly, right? You're, you're oiling the brakes, you're not fully replacing the brakes, things like that. Okay? Fuel costs. So Sean talked about this a little bit. Right, one more, right there? If I move too slow, you'll move me along, right? So it's good. So Sean said we're at about 1.34 per year in miles per gallon efficiency increase over the span of, let's say, 20 years. When I looked at this, I went from 1980 to 2020. So we took 20 years. Oh, it's right down there on the bottom. And I took car SUV as the target here, just for this analysis. Could have went higher, could have went lower. But basically, when you look at that 15-mile-per-gallon increase over 20 years, and you look at the city's fleet, which has an average age of nine, yeah, nine years, your average age of your fleet is about 2016 when you look at the vehicle. So average means half of that is more than nine years, right? So you can see you're losing miles per gallon with those older vehicles. That's money the city pays for fuel. And so that's one of the advantages of that. You can see that empirically. Got it. So what happens if you delay replacement? There's a cost of that. Depreciation is really the single largest value of what you lose when you're dealing with fleets, right? You all know this, when you buy cars in your personal life, it's a depreciating asset. If you can pay cash for it, great. If you finance it, you're financing a depreciation, depreciating asset. You guys know all this. Times 100, right, for the city's fleet. So this just shows the difference or the delta. And I talked to you about the different columns and replacement costs to give you a max man. Basically, the delta between the max man is about 60 on the low end to 80 on the high end, just by deferring one year. Again, that's another vehicle you can buy if you implement the replacement plan when you can. So that's what those versions are about. Okay. Now, what everybody loves to talk about right in California is their emission vehicles. Again, this is not positioned politically or anything else. This is just telling you what the mandate is, right? State law is. So you can see A and B, that's the main thing here. January 24, you got 50% compliance for new vehicles. January 27, you have 100% compliance. Granted, a lot of agencies are not going to be able to comply with this for many of the reasons we can get into. But it's our job to show you what that pathway can look like. And when you dig into the California Air Resource Board, regulations, rulings, and all those elements, you have basically two options. You have a date compliance option, which means of that date, you're compliant, okay? And you have a compliance pathway option with reporting. Not as easy, but you have to have a plan to do that. Well, now the city has a plan to do that. Whether you implement it or not is a different issue you all will deal with. But at least now you have, if carb comes knocking at your door, you have a compliance pathway. And so I'll show you what that is on the next slide. So the green is the mandate. You can see 24, 25 into 26, it's 50%. That's the green line. And then at 27, it jumps up to 100%, okay? The blue is if you took advantage of all alternatives for zero emission vehicles. And I can talk to you about that a little bit more. But basically, emergency vehicles are exempt, okay? So if you, you don't have to claim those because they're exempt. But if you did do a conversion, you'd get more percentage towards that. So it's not a right or wrong. It's just if you take all the alternatives, you know, the blue is what that looks like. If you only, if you use those exemptions for your emergency vehicles, then it's the orange line, okay? And either way, you can get to compliance within five years. Lot of challenges with that, you know, the cost of the vehicles, the infrastructure, all those things. But this is a compliance pathway, okay? I didn't know what the result was going to be, but it worked out that within five years, you could get to that point. you could get to that point. So with that, I think we are going to turn it back over to Sean. Thank you very much.
So in conclusion, our aging fleet presents a number of operational challenges. Without an effective fleet plan in place, we risk encountering issues such as unpredictable disposal values, erratic repair and maintenance costs, and potential regulatory compliance issues. The goal of this analysis was to address these challenges and establish a clear path forward, as which Shane said. To summarize, as part of our fleet modernization plan, we completed a comprehensive analysis of the city's fleet, incorporating industry best practices to guide our approach. Based on this analysis, we developed replacement criteria tailored to the specific vehicles in the fleet and how they're used, ensuring that our decisions are data driven and aligned with operational needs. We've established financial targets for the next six years to guide our investment and ensure fiscal responsibility throughout the modernization process. The strategy also includes the adoption of alternate acquisition models, which will help the city comply with California's vehicle mandates by fiscal year 2930, ensuring that we move towards regulatory requirements. Lastly, as we look ahead, we may need to bring future action requests, particularly for approval of the replacement criteria and annual budget allocations, which are essential to ensure we stay on track and continue to make progress in a structured and efficient way. Next slide. With that, I'd like to thank you for your time and open up to any questions that you may have.
What's that supposed to be telling us?
It is basically just showing that year over year, we'll slowly build our way to compliance, we got to start at one vehicle at a time.
Hey, Sean. Hi. A quick question. For January 1st, 2027, the zero emission vehicles mandate by California, what happens if we are not 100%?
Some of that's still in flux, because a lot of agencies haven't been subjected to CARB violations yet, but what we think will happen is CARB will come and say, what's your plan for compliance? If you don't have a plan, then you'll receive the hardest violation, we haven't quite seen that yet. If you do have a plan, they'll ask you, they'll audit that and ask you to report annually. That's a projection, right? But we don't know exactly what will happen. But that's, based on the regulations, we believe those that have a compliance pathway are going to be treated differently than those that haven't addressed it.
Okay. And then, so we currently do not have an idea of what the punitive penalties can be if we don't have, even have a plan in place, is that right?
Yes. Now, I don't have all the knowledge of every agency in the state, right? 484 cities and 50 counties, but because the regulation just went into place January 2024, I don't believe we've seen the outcome of any initial violations.
Okay, thank you.
I have questions. I go to conferences, talk to people from other cities, and there's not a city who's not talking about what's going on with this CARB stuff. And this requirement for 50%, of the vehicles we buy as of today have to be electric. I think that's the nature of what they're talking about, they want us, and the cost of an electric vehicle is a factor higher than buying a gas vehicle. And the infrastructure we need to charge those vehicles, if we have it in our fleet, I presume we would have to install the charging stations ourselves for our own fleet, and there would be a capital cost involved with that. And the practicality of this is, of course, that we are being handed another unfunded mandate. Basically, you have to do this, otherwise, we're going to find you. And if they find you, I suppose that's going to cost us money, and if we don't have a path, you know, I get all of that stuff slowly, but the general feeling out there is this is, this is bad news all the way around, we're never going to be able to get there. I'm understanding that the capital equipment category, things like backhoes and that sort of thing, we are required to replace 50% of those with electric options as well, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. There aren't any exemptions for city or public works fleet, except for emergency vehicles.
Okay. And how many electric backhoes are there available in the market today?
Yeah, not many. I can give you one example, even though these cities didn't have to do it in the inland empire, they kind of got together in their authority and they bought an electric fire engine. And there's a big press release about that, and everything was great, that was the only one, though.
Yeah.
And that fire, electric fire engine had a gas generator because...
So it actually technically was burning gas.
The one thing I should say is that I want to ensure that the council knows that the fleet modernization plan is a separate issue from the zero emission vehicle compliance. So I just want to make sure of that.
I get that, but the two come together in my mind, because it's, if we don't buy a vehicle, then we can keep what we have, make it last longer, maybe spend more money on the maintenance side, and avoid that mandate altogether. Because what I am hearing, at least from Sacramento and other cities, is that this mandate is probably going to go away, or it's probably going to get pushed down the hill. And so it would be a travesty, quite frankly, we see them all the time in government, in California especially, it would be a travesty to see us spend millions of dollars to be in compliance and then just have it pushed down the road. I don't know how we could comply, to be honest with you. The state of California Department of Transportation went to Ford Motor Company and placed an order for 165 electric pickup trucks, and you see them around, they are out there. And Ford came back and said, we can't build you 165, we'll send you 80. So I mean, this is, this is one of those situations where we are being placed in an impossible situation to comply with that EV stuff, in terms of the replacement, the rest, it's a beautiful piece of work, absolutely outstanding, and I'm going to stay up late tonight and read this thing until at least 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, so just kidding. I am going to absorb this, I promise you that, and I can't absorb it all right now. But this is somewhere where I believe we, as a city, need to stand up and basically say, let's make the stuff that we have work longer, longer, and look at the economics of doing that, because there's an economic model for that, too. And, you know, I just can't imagine what, you know, the ferry boat up in, what's it, Newport Beach in Balboa?
Balboa.
Yeah, that was like a $17 million project, you know, it was all funded by taxpayer money out of, and the guys could have replaced it all with new ferries, with gas motors, and done it for a couple of million bucks. And it cost the taxpayers $17 million, and I think we're, hopefully, we're coming around to a sense of common sense in, maybe later than the rest of the country, but common sense in Sacramento. So anyway, my hope is that we can figure a way to avoid EV altogether, and hope these laws go away out of common sense, but we'll have to plan that longer term. So thank you for a great presentation, by the way. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you for the presentation. Okay. My question has to do with item one, and it talks about purchase of ZEVs and also near-ZEV. Am I reading that, the N is for near-ZEV? What does that mean? Is that a hybrid? Is it an alternative fuel? What is considered a near-ZEV?
Near-ZEV, it can be a certain type of hybrid, plug-in electric, for example. Other alternative fuels could be considered zero emission vehicle hydrogen, for example. So some of those can comply.
What type of hydrogen? Is it like saying it has to be the green hydrogen, or it can be blue hydrogen?
Yeah, fuel cell, it doesn't specify that, so...
Okay.
The easiest way I can just explain it real quick on a hybrid is, you have a hybrid gas-electric, or you have like a plug-in hybrid. And sometimes, like, for example, clean air, a plug-in hybrid is considered clean air, a regular hybrid is not considered clean air vehicle, even though it's cleaner air. So that's the easiest one I can give you.
Okay. And then what about the, did the California Air Resources Board CARB offer any money, incentives? Usually with big programs, there's money available?
This is unfunded.
Completely unfunded. Okay.
Ouch.
I should say, there are grant programs, you know, of any kinds, but there's nothing specific aligned with...
On the fleets.
Yeah, yeah, thanks.
I have just two questions. So with the executive order that Trump just signed, does that impact this in any way?
Speaking of extra funding, so there were grant funds for a few zero emission vehicle infrastructure and vehicle purchases, right? So as I said, there's some money, but it wasn't directly aligned with the mandate. I believe that is now not an option at the federal level anymore.
And but doing away with the EV mandate?
Doesn't affect California's law at this time.
Okay, one last question. As far as our police and marine safety fleet, how many of those vehicles have hit that benchmark? The five, four years, 80,000?
I'd have to, I actually have the details right here, but I believe there's a single marine safety vehicle that has hit the benchmark already. Just to clarify, are we talking about replacement criteria?
Yeah, the four years, 80,000.
Yeah. And then the police utility vehicles, there's three or four of them. So we have them on, scheduled for next year's budget for replacement amount, so.
Perfect. One more question. On the marine, are the CDOs part of the fleet?
Yeah, so that's part of our total fleet, but those were not included in this.
So if you want to replace the CDOs, you don't...
That's, yeah, that's not part of the...
It's not going to be electric mandate?
No, it won't be electric.
All right. Just checking. Just checking.
Any more questions? No? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Okay.
Okay, we're moving on to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council pursuant to the Brown Act. The council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future agenda. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council and not to any individual, member of the staff, or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. Speaker cards are available at the clerk's desk for those wishing to sign up to address the council, although the submission of a speaker card is not required in order to address the council. I don't have any speaker cards, is there anybody who would like to speak?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to, and some of my neighbors wanted to, address you regarding this proposed pipeline coming from the Haynes steam plant that's currently proposed to run through College Park West and over the College Park Bridge, which is apparently technically part of Long Beach, which complicates matters a bit. The neighborhood hasn't really been given any information about this, and we're all concerned that since we only have one way in and one way out of our neighborhood over that bridge, that adding all this weight, dynamic vibration, could compromise the bridge, and then we'll all be stuck. It's going to cost everybody a lot of money. So I think what we're asking is for the city to do some investigations with Long Beach and slow their roll, so to speak, because it seems like they're just pushing ahead right now. And I don't really know what we can do, because Long Beach seems to be doing whatever they want, putting test wells in, in the neighborhood. And so our ask is that someone on the council steps in and addresses this with Long Beach to find an alternative plan. There's lots of different ways to get a pipe from over there to over there without using an old bridge that's in okay shape, but the substructure is rated as poor, so adding another few million pounds to this thing every day is probably not going to help anybody. So that's what we're here to ask you guys to do, so. I'll leave this with the clerk. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, members of the council. I have lived in College Park West for over 50 years. There's one way in, one way out. That bridge has been there since the homes were built in the 1960s. Adding more weight to it is endangering our lives. Even having one way in and one way out for, I know it's proposed six to, three to six months, but we all know what happens with construction, it's probably going to be more like six to 12 months. And that is, that's a very big concern, because it's not an easy place to get in and out of. And if something happens to that bridge, we're now on an island, and we don't have any way out. And that's, that's a bigger issue that has been addressed in the past, but we're here where we are now. And really and truly, these meetings, we got a notice about a meeting on Saturday, there's a meeting on Wednesday in the middle of the day when most of us are working. So as Mr. Isle said, they're just pushing this through, bulldozing over us, and we're going to be the ones left out on the island. Okay? There's no benefit, from what I see, and I can't go to Wednesday's meeting because I will be at work. There's no benefit to Seal Beach residents, but we're taking the brunt of all the difficulties in building this process. So thank you for joining.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council, for your time this evening. I haven't lived in the neighborhood as long as some of my other neighbors, since 2000. It's a great community, you guys understand, it's a unique community, because we are on an island surrounded by freeways on one, both sides, and then the river, which kind of makes it kind of a unique feature. I remember when I first moved into the community, my wife was like, that's our only in, way in and out, and she goes, what happens if the bridge collapses? And I said, let me go talk to the fire chief and ask him. And his response, it was funny, he goes, if that bridge collapses, we got bigger problems than that. And he goes, but it's going to be okay. We have some wonderful members in our community that are really passionate about this, and they've done some research. I have a report from the Federal Highway Administration, they did a structural report dated November 2022. Apparently, they do these inspections every two years. We know that our infrastructure in our own nation is, we've got failing bridges nationwide. I'm looking at this report from our own federal government. It says the substructure of our bridge is in poor condition, it has advanced section loss, deterioration, spalling, or scour. I'm not an engineer, I'm a high school teacher, I teach AP US history, I have no idea what spalling or scour is. But I do understand poor condition, and I do understand that hundreds of our members of our community use that bridge every single day, our mail service, Federal Express, God forbid, knock on wood, emergency services. And when you tell us two major pipelines are going to be hung from that bridge, and millions of gallons of water are going to be going through that at high velocity, just like our aging fleet, when cars get older, they vibrate, they shake, bolts get loose, oil, fluid, what's going to happen to that bridge when you put so much stress on it, when it's already under poor condition? Once again, the Federal Highway Administration of the National Transportation Board of our federal government. I'm a concerned parent that my daughters are going to drive over that bridge. And I guess my only remaining question is, why do we care what Long Beach does? They are not a good neighbor to us. Why do we care what happens with the Haynes Power Plant? That's the LA WDP. We need to fight back and protect ours. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I, too, have lived in the neighborhood for almost my whole life, it took a time away to go work somewhere else, but I do have a few questions about, have all of the other options been figured out and looked at and decided, is there any other way? We talked about it the other day at the meeting down in the park, and they could come out, go down Westminster, up Studebaker, they're going to Studebaker anyway. Why are we involving Seal Beach in someone else's problem? And this is another mandate, like you spoke to earlier about the water, we got to have, we got to reduce the amount of water we use, we got to reduce all this stuff, which is impossible, because you can't irrigate our houses with recycled water. And for the, the one thing they're offering of us is free recycled water. Well, I don't really need any recycled water, I need a bridge so I can get in and out of my neighborhood. And if that thing goes down, that's a ghost town. There's, you're not going to, the city's evacuation plan is to drive us down the bike trail all the way to... trail all the way to Catella. That's not an evacuation plan. That's a one-way road. That's a survival. That's to get out and be done. And so I think until, before we have exhausted all other options, let's stop this in its tracks, and let's make sure that we're thinking about the residents of Seal Beach and forget about Los Angeles County at this time. And that's what I ask of you. And I would also like to reference a few things that were said earlier when we talked about the homeless situation on the riverbed. And there's signs on there that say, call Long Beach if there's any issues. I've called Long Beach. I've called Los Angeles County. I've spent hours on the phone, and they all just say it's not our problem. That's on the Seal Beach side. There's a, I called the number that is on the thing that says, call city of Long Beach. They don't care. Actually, you can't get through. They ask you if you want to talk to somebody about shoes hanging from telephone wires, press five. I don't care about that. I want to, I want to get the homeless people the help they need and off our bike trail, where our kids like to ride their bikes. It's a safety issue, and it's a cleanliness issue. It's a hygiene issue we need to attach. And just to reference your situation earlier, Councilman Steele's the electric fire engine. We put one of those in my, my fire station. It was the first one in the country, $100,000 installed just for the electrical charging station, just for one fire station, for one fire engine. I came from the city of Portland, Oregon, and again, got a huge fuel tank for a diesel generator so that we can actually pump on a fire. Certain places, this doesn't apply. We just need to use common sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council?
Good evening, Council. Hope Horning, Seal Beach. Regarding Agenda Item G, Resolution 7607, I have absolutely no objection to the city council accepting the resolution for the completed construction project of TLS Choice for the special lighting at the Tennis and Pickleball Center, so they can receive their final payment. I'm sorry, I was out of town in May of 2024 when it became apparent that Assad Holdings LLC, doing business as Orange Blue, was unable to complete the more than $12 million project that the city council awarded them in August of 2023. At that time, the proposed $2 million contract was on the consent calendar, even though a protest by another bidder had been made. Before the award was made and during the comment period, a labor compliance investigator, Gus Garcia of the Center for Contract Compliance, provided the city council additional information that was not in the agenda packet prepared by city staff. The rather significant information Mr. Garcia provided was that with only four employees, Orange Blue would be relying on their primary subcontractor, who was exempt from having workers' compensation insurance because they had no employees. The second paragraph of tonight's agenda staff report on Resolution 7607 entitled, "Background and Analysis," indicates that Orange Blue had expressed concerns about being able to complete the project, quote, "due to ongoing industry-wide labor and material shortage," end quote. I find it odd that TLS Choice, who did complete the lighting project, had no difficulty with the so-called "industry-wide labor and material shortage." It looks to me like we've gone full circle with Orange Blue. From the very beginning, in the professional opinion of Mr. Garcia, Orange Blue should not have received the contract for the Tennis and Pickleball Center, and awarding of such would not be in the public's interest. When new city council members go to training on how to become good city council members, Mr. Garcia's organization is there, offering insight into how and why about public works projects. I would encourage the city council to give his organization and the Center for Contract Compliance a call, to see if they would provide such a workshop here locally for staff, city council members, and the public. And on an entirely different subject, not on the agenda, but for your consideration to perhaps be on the agenda in another meeting, last week, the city of Huntington Beach City Council voted unanimously to make Huntington Beach a non-sanctuary city to enable their law enforcement officers to assist with the Department of Homeland Security's efforts regarding public safety and the removal of undocumented criminals from our communities. In particular, they sought to ensure police officers are not put in jeopardy because of California sanctuary's laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to the approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances. By motion of the city council, this is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or rearrange the order of the agenda. Does anyone want to pull a consent calendar item?
I do.
And what would that?
Go ahead.
Mayor, I would like to pull Item G for discussion.
I'd like to second that.
And I'd like to pull H.
And I will be pulling Item I. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor. Two supplemental communications were provided. After posting of the agenda, they've been made available to the council and the public.
Thank you. Okay, now I'd like to call for a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda. Please vote.
Need the motion in a second first.
I'll move. Second.
Who moved?
Seneca.
Okay.
Joe moved. You, second. Doesn't matter.
Now you may vote on your iPad.
Mine worked.
I don't have the vote. Mine didn't light up for voting.
Okay. Councilmember Kalmak, how, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Seneca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Steele, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
Okay, Ceni Attorney, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, the report is that the city council met in closed session this afternoon to meet on the one item on the posted agenda. All five council members were present, and no reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Interim City Manager, Gallegos, do you have anything to report?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Chief Edison and Sergeant Brian Gray for hosting staff for the winter storm preparation last week. It's a great opportunity for us to understand our roles and responsibilities during what's supposed to be a La Nina forecast during the winter, so thank you for that. Along the same lines, the city is preparing, as you heard from Sergeant Gray, a local hazard mitigation plan. A questionnaire is posted on the homepage of our city website, soliciting public input to help us identify and plan for future natural disasters. And with the budget season right around the corner, if you haven't already done so, we encourage you to view our Seal Beach Budget Process video that's posted on the city website. It provides a good overview for those of you who don't and haven't been to our workshops and want to understand how we process the budget during the budget season, so please take a look at that. And finally, and I know more of this will be said a little bit later, but I want to recognize the passing of Jim Klassen, which many of us had the good fortune of knowing. So I want to give condolences to his family, and again, recognize his many decades of long contributions to the city. I got to know Jim probably two decades ago as a resident, and he's just a great man and ambassador to the city of Seal Beach, so many thanks for, to his family for allowing us to share in his life. And again, condolences to his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Council comments? Councilman Wong?
Sure. Since our last council meeting, which was held on Monday, January 13th, since then, Wednesday, January 15th, I attended the Association of California Cities. It's a new orientation meeting for new council persons. On Saturday, January 18th, I was given a tour of Seal Beach Police Department and got to tour the different, the different functions of different groups within, like, for example, like the Emergency Task Force, Planning, and the K-9. And then also on Thursday, January 23rd, I attended the NAIOP meeting, which is basically for Commercial Real Estate Development Association. And then on Saturday, January 25th, I attended, just as a listener, at an open meeting held at Edison Park for College Park West. This was hosted by College Park West residents Ken Seif and John Janasek about the Haynes Pipeline. And then also later on, also on Saturday, January 25th, I attended the swearing-in for Congressman Dave Minn. And then, yeah, that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kalmak?
Oh, thank you. Let's see. I also attended the swearing-in for Dave Minn, and I attended our Rivers and Mountains Conservancy meeting. I attended, on behalf of Councilman Steele, the Orange County Library Board meeting. I attended our Orange County Fire Authority meeting, along with another Legislative and Public Affairs Committee meeting. I went, along with Councilmember Wong, to the neighborhood meeting in College Park West to learn more about what was happening on site. I attended, yesterday, we had a neighbor-for-neighbor meeting on the Green Belt for the residents of the area of around 13th, 14th Streets, and had participation by our police department and Orange County Fire and the Lions Club, who unfortunately, the hot dogs got rained out a bit, but we did, we were able to get in a lot of good information for the residents. And just upcoming, we have another meeting of our San Gabriel River Working Group, which is continuing to move forward with regard to the trash situation in the San Gabriel River. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I will report that I attended the Association of California Cities for Orange County. This was for newly elected members. It was an orientation and mandatory training, Assembly Bill 1234. This is ethics training for local officials, and also AB 1661. This is sexual harassment prevention training for elected officials. So Ben was also there, and we did pass, so we did get our certificates on the training. I'm happy to report. Duly noted, yes. I also met, it was just a meet and greet with our Seal Beach Police Officers Association, getting to know some of our officers. Thank you for their time. I attended, along with Ben, the Police Department, the half-day, where we spent on a Saturday with the staff, and we went through everything. It was an amazing four hours. It could have been 10. I want to thank you for hosting us and for the team giving up their Saturday to be with us as well. And I also want to appreciate, in talking individually when you weren't around, Chief, your team has a safety culture, and I was really impressed with how we do our best to make sure when we're approaching suspects and so forth, that they're very concerned about the safety as well of the suspects. I mean, we're always concerned about our police force, but there was a lot of, I could tell the culture was to do everything to prevent escalation of incidents, so I want to thank you for that. I attended the Seal Beach Recreation and Parks Commission meeting last week, and Tim Kelsey is here. I want to give you a shout-out, Tim. The pickleball over at our tennis center now has a pilot program for drop-in play, and I know this has been percolating for a while, and I think that the community and you came together and found a good solution. So thank you for getting a pilot together. Next, I attended the Southern California Association of Government, the Orange County Council of Governments. I will be appointed to a policy committee, and that committee is going to be energy and environment, which we talked a little bit about tonight. This committee will be an appointment to represent Orange County to the Southern California Association, and this committee looks at energy issues, environment, air, water, solids, hazardous waste, habitat preservation, and environmental impact analysis. So I'll report more out of that. I also attended the Haynes Community Meeting that was held on Saturday, and I just want to thank the community for putting your meeting together, for inviting us. The information exchange, I learned a lot, a lot of information. I did read through the report you were mentioning, and so thank you for, you know, doing your part to elevate and bring it to our attention, but provide information, and so we can read and learn. And then, Mayor, I have one thing I'd like also to ask to have on the agenda for our next meeting, that we have an urgent issue over in College Park East. It's starting to rain. You know, we get flooded out with rains from our stormwater drains, so I'd like to have on the agenda for the next meeting, Mayor, that we have, we talk about the rainy season and the urgent need to clean the silt and the mud from our storm drains, which are flat, and so therefore, we get a lot of this silt, mud, and other stuff in there. So I'd like to have a discussion at the next council meeting, if you see fit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Since our last meeting, I attended a presentation, an open house, at an organization called Pathways, which is located in Lakewood. They serve this Seal Beach and other communities around Lakewood, and this is an organization that provides hospice services to families, and they provide it absolutely free to the families who need help in those, we think of it as final days, but there are a lot of things that happen in people's lives, as, as people are caregivers for people who are dying, and, and needs, and safety in the home, and all sorts of things that these people touch. But nonetheless, these people do it absolutely free. They're called Pathways, and it's hospice services for free that is available to us here in Seal Beach. I attended the ACCOC conference as well, and the training session, and got my appropriate diploma for said offenses. I went to the West Orange County Water Board meeting. I attended the Orange County Mosquito Vector meeting. I was invited to speak to the Sunshine Club in Leisure World. Sunshine Club is one of the more popular clubs in Leisure World, and it's, it's, the president is Anna Derby, who is kind of well-known among us, anyway, and she is one of the most active, publicly-minded people in Leisure World, and there's, her Sunshine Club is kind of like her baby. They normally have 40 or 50 people there, and apparently, their speaker for that Friday canceled on her, and so she kind of got in touch with me and said, are you available? And I said, sure, I'd love to. So I had a great time talking to those folks, and took a Q&amp;A session, talked about different things. One of the issues that came up was homelessness, and another one was gas-powered leaf blowers. Somebody has a problem with that, so, you know, I don't know. Anyway, that was a great time with them. I attended Cal Cities Conference up in Sacramento last week. This is their regular sort of, it's, it's covering the, the way we are supposed to conduct ourselves in public business, and what leadership looks like, and that sort of thing. But I also, while I was in Sacramento, attended the Subcommittee of Cal Cities statewide of revenue and taxation. So briefly on that committee, it is the interface between cities, Cal Cities, and state legislature on proposed legislations by the state, as it affects us in our taxes and our revenues. How we share taxes in this state is a mystery to just about everybody. But nonetheless, their focus is on the legislation of, the legislatures up in Sacramento, and how it affects our tax stream, our, our revenue streams here in cities all over California. And so that was very informative, very much, I'm in orientation mode, and so I'll have more to learn and more to see what's going on there. Let me see. Finally, last but not least, I would like to tell the world that our friend, Councilmember Joe Kalmak, has been elected Vice Chair of the Orange County Fire Authority Board of Directors. It's a 25-member board. It's a 25-member board. Joe has been on that board for a while now, but he has been selected to be Vice Chair, which means next year, he will be Chair. So anyway, that's quite, when you think about it, some of the cities in Southern California that go into OCFA, some of them don't have term limits. We have term limits. So we get eight years to rise up in these organizations and make an impact. And so it doesn't always happen for us. You have other cities, well, where guys have been around town, shall we say, around the county for 30 years. And so those guys have been chairman of these boards and had influence on these boards time and time again. The other board that's important in this kind of way is Orange County Sanitation. Because some of the people on that board have been on that board for decades. And us guys with term limits seldom get a choice to rise up to the level of Vice Chair. So my congratulations to Joe Kelmick. And I think he deserves a round of applause. Final word, tonight is the 80th anniversary of the liberation of Dachau, oh, excuse me, Auschwitz in 1945 on this day, January 27th. Today is the International Day of Holocaust Remembrance. And so say a prayer, think of them, and don't forget.
Thank you. This weekend, I was under the weather a little bit, so I missed a couple of important events. First of all, my apologies, I didn't make it out to College Park West. I just have a quick question, Iris. Is there anything that we can do for the residents who are working that day? Is it going to be videotaped?
Certainly, we, we will establish some protocols and communication from that day's event. And if there is somebody that has some follow-up questions that isn't able to attend, we will be happy to direct them to speak with whoever is designated communication specialist over there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, clarification, Mayor? Please? So we're videotaping or recording it or?
We do not have video recording capabilities at Edison Park, unfortunately.
Okay, because it's outside?
Thank you. And I missed the Neighbor for Neighbor event. Thank you, Chief and Sergeant Gray. Just had a couple of questions. What was the attendance like?
It was very well-attended. I actually say it's probably one of the best-attended Neighbor for Neighbor open houses that we've ever had. I'm going to guess that around 50 participants were there. And they got demonstrations on how to properly use a fire extinguisher and there was good interaction with the community. So very, very well-attended.
Awesome, thank you. And thank you to the department, the CERT team, the VIPS, the Lions Club. Do we know when our next Neighbor for Neighbor is?
We don't, but we're working with three different groups. Our goal is to have one a quarter for this year, so I'll update you in that data set.
Okay, I think my house is next, right, Chief?
I'm sorry?
I think my house is next, right?
It may be. We'll check on that for you.
Thank you. And then to add to what Interim City Manager Gallegos said, on Friday, January 17th, Seal Beach lost a resident businessman, community leader, and renowned storyteller, Jim Kossanen. Jim's community service in Seal Beach began when he joined the Seal Beach Business Association about 43 years ago and got involved with the Christmas Parade a year later. A year after that, he became the Chair of the beloved event for 22 years and was named Grand Marshal of the Parade on his 23rd year. Jim served as the President of the Business Association, the Chamber, and the Lions Club twice. He joined the Seal Beach Lions Club 40 years ago this month and was considered the godfather of the club, bringing more, bringing in more than 200 members, including myself, I am a Lion, more than any other Lion in the state of California. He received many honors in Lionism, the Governor's Appreciation Medal, the International President's Medal, and numerous Melvin Jones fellowships, the highest honor a club can bestow on a member. Jim was a big supporter of the Women's Club and the Junior Women's Club and started the Lioness Club. He was Seal Beach's first Cypress Community College Citizen of the Year and served on their selection committee for 20 years. Jim was known as one of the most generous people in Seal Beach, supporting every event and organization in town financially and often loaning his trucks to them as well. A true patriot, Jim decorated the entire community with American flags each, each year on 4th of July. And of course, anyone who knew Jim or saw his cart or his Baytown Realty on Main Street knew he was a huge Pittsburgh Steelers fan. It would be impossible to capture all of what Jim was to our community, his many friends within it in such a short time. He was loved by so many and is already deeply missed. Finally, our sincere condolences go to Jim's family. Thank you for sharing him with us for all these years. And that is it for council comments. There are no council items. Items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and are enacted by a single motion with the exception of items removed by council members. I'd like to call for a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar with the
Moved.
If I may, for the consent calendar for item number E, for the city council appointments, right now, we have some of the commissioners on, may I introduce them to the, is that out of protocol?
Fine with me.
I wanted to give a special recognition to Karen Nolte, right? She's back over there. And then, and I apologize to Karen, I always forget, your last name is Arboy or Arbott or?
Arboy.
Arboy, right? And then she's a longtime Seal Beach College Park West resident, resident, she's been born and raised. And then she had past experience at, for the City of Long Beach Health, as well as working on the committee, supporting the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, right? She's been terrific Seal Beach resident as far as also founding, helping found the Seal, excuse me, CPW Preserve and being a longtime advocate for Seal Beach as a whole. So we were very, very fortunate that she agreed to accept this position as Planning Commissioner and so we're ecstatic, right? I'd like to also recognize Robert Elliott, right, right over here. He's a third-generation resident of Seal Beach. He's also a fire, a fire captain, right? And he will be serving on our Parks and Recreation Committee. And then I think those are the only people present here. So thank you for letting me add that in.
Of course. Would you like to second?
I would love to second, please.
And this, we're voting on the consent calendar.
I'll take a roll call vote. Mayor Protem Still, how do you vote? Councilmember Wong, how do you vote?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Senical, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro, Mayor Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
You were called upon.
I was?
Yes, you were.
Oh.
She started with.
Okay, we are now on to items removed from the consent calendar. We are now going to further discuss the items that were removed. City managers, there a staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. For item G, this is the notice of completion for the Tennis and Pickleball Center. We're happy to answer any questions that you may have on this item. Public Works Director Lee will be responding to your questions.
Okay.
So just as a quick recap of the item in question here that's being recommended tonight, this is a notice of completion related to the Tennis and Pickleball, Pickleball Sports Court Lighting Project that was awarded to TLS Choice back in May. So the work has been completed. So it is customary that we file a notice of completion after we have accepted the work. So this is the item tonight and open for questions.
For the, if I, if I may, for the original award to Asad Holdings and Orange Blue, I guess it was a $2 million contract. For this portion that was allotted to TLS Choice, was this amount, this 201, deducted from Orange Blue's original contract?
So not exactly $201,000. It was a portion of the electrical, onsite electrical work was deducted out of Orange Blue's base contract. So they did do some onsite electrical work also, so a component of it was taken out. So to the point that City Attorney, if you could advise what I can state or what I can't state because of the ongoing discussions regarding this particular project. But to your point, Councilmember Wong, I do want to say that there was the face bid projects that were, items that were deducted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. My questions have to do with, I had, I did get a couple of calls on this and I got a lot of history on this. And so my concern was, it seemed like that the con, the, well, I know you'll stop me if I'm, it's, I just wanted to make sure that we have a better process in place, maybe, or we did some lessons learned. It seemed like the, the original bidder might have, if they were the lowest bidder, but in terms of, you know, work comp maybe not being in place and other, not having a crew and maybe, so the point is, you know, I want to make sure we have something in place where there's, you know, we're checking off, they have the work comp, they have the staff, they're a rating, because, you know, it's easy to check ratings on contractors. So yes, in the end, we were able to get this resolute, this part handled, but there's time delays. And again, if we had a more qualified bidder, I think, I just want to make sure we have something in place where we don't have to go through this again and have to delay and pull back a contract. And, and then the association that was mentioned, I'm not familiar with them, I assume you might be. So maybe that's something, there's some standards in there that we can adopt as well.
So I just wanted to emphasize that the Department of Industrial Relations does have a registration website that's kept up to date. And Iris, and then I personally checked the website to verify that that subcontractor was licensed. DIR licensed them and acknowledged that they didn't have, didn't need workers' compensation. So there was no reason to deny the contract to Orange Blue on that basis. In fact, it would have caused some problems because they were a lowest responsible bidder. They satisfied the requirement to be registered with DIR. And we did work with, we were in constant communication with the Center for Contract Compliance. The Center for Contract Compliance's goal is to ensure that on every public works project in California, prevailing wages are paid to the workers. And so the Center, Center for Contract Compliance representative did contact the city fairly regularly, I'd say maybe once every couple of months, to ask the city to contact Orange Blue to ask for certified payroll records. And under state law, we have the duty of the city to ask our contractors to provide those certified payroll records to the Center for Contract Compliance. To my knowledge, they were provided and I'm not aware of any disputes being raised with DIR over the wages paid to those workers.
If I may just add to what you just stated, City Attorney, that is a correct statement. So yes, there were definitely visits from CCC to the project site and there weren't any, I guess, documented violations or noted on there. And just to make sure that, that DIR certified payrolls were actually submitted, progress payments were not issued until all the checklist items are provided, which includes certified payroll in this case.
Okay, I'm just, again, having to go back into the contract, take out the, what was it, the two, the 200,000 that we're going to approve tonight for the new contractor. Just, again, a concern that a contract of that size, you know, we just want to make sure that we're, I know we have to go with the lowest bidder, but also that they have the staff to actually complete the job.
Is the work, I think the work's already completed.
It is, yeah. So we're just, this is the new contractor we're approving tonight.
For lighting.
It's noted as a completion.
This is just, they, a statement that gets recorded stating that the work is complete.
Yes.
So the work is done.
And just for the record, this two, this amount, the 201 for the new contractor, was not paid to the prior contractor. So the city is not out any money on this.
A component of the work that they didn't perform was deducted out of Orange Blue's contract.
Okay.
Could I ask a question, if I may? When we let the RFP for this project, did we do that on our own or did we have help on that with, by a consulting company?
If I may ask to clarify, this contract, meaning this particular NOCTLS's contract or Orange Blue's contract?
Orange Blue.
That was publicly bidded.
But did we have help doing it?
There was a consultant that was brought on as a project manager to assist with that.
So we had a project manager involved with the RFP process?
It was, yes, we do have a construction manager, program manager, that was brought on board to oversee the project.
It wasn't, it was in full compliance with the laws of Seal Beach, State of California, et cetera, correct?
That is the correct statement.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Okay. I'll second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Senical, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Still, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Mayor Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
Okay, next item, item H.
H.
Approving and authorizing amendment to approve a retroactive agreement between the City of Seal Beach and Golden Rain Foundation to recognize and support reimbursement for emergency vaccination services provided to residents within the Leisure World community during the COVID-19 pandemic by way of a FEMA request for reimbursement. City Manager, do you have a staff report?
No. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. We are happy to answer any questions that you have or provide a brief summary of the report.
This is soon after I was sworn in back in 2023. It seems so long ago now. I was contacted by Kathy Thayer of Golden Rain Foundation and she had a problem. Leisure World was vaccinating our residents in January of 2020, I'm going to say, one. One of the first areas to get the vaccination were an older community and so we kind of had a priority status in the line. And the drug company had contacted Seal Beach and said, or excuse me, Leisure World and said, let's vaccinate your, your people, hire some people to come in and we'll do this program. And they did it, I think, two or two weekends or three weekends and they did like 9,000 or I don't know how many thousand people, but they, we got vaccinated very early in that process and I was one of those people. But the problem was, is the drug company assumed, Leisure World assumed they were going to get reimbursed by the drug company for the payroll and expenses associated with doing these, these clinics. And, and the drug company said, no, you've got to get that through FEMA. Well, we had, didn't have the status to get through FEMA and didn't have a status to get reimbursed for this money. And it's somewhere in the range of $45,000, which is a significant number for us old folks. The, we have not been reimbursed for this. And, and they were trying every way possible to get reimbursed on this stuff. So they asked me to take it to our famous police department over here. And Sergeant, can you stand up for us, please? He, he sat down with Kathy on, I'm sure more than one, no, you stand up. I, I want to say thank you. He took this bull by the horn. The challenge was to get this project approved by FEMA post fact. And tonight, what this measure is doing is we are giving our city's stamp of approval so that now Leisure World can go to FEMA and submit the expenses and get reimbursed for this $40,000 four years after the fact. And this man drove the bus that got us to this point. We're still not at the finish line, we're still not reimbursed, but I want to thank you very much.
... Actually, very collaborative between you, the chief legal, your team, Amy, Kathy Thayer, Leisure World, and Cal, yes. So it was interesting.
Just, just a small example of how this city works for the, the people who live here. I mean, this is absolutely outstanding. So I want to recognize you and PD and everybody else who's recognized on this to, for a job well done. Thank you very much. So with that, I'm going to move that we pass this item.
And, no.
I'll take a roll call vote. Mayor Protem Still, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Senical, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
Okay, item I, approve updated job specifications for police corporal and police sergeant classifications. Interim City Manager Gallegos, do you have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor. We are happy to provide a staff report through the Police Department. Chief Henderson can provide a brief summary and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor Landau, council members. The item before you tonight is a request to update and modernize the job specifications for the job titles of police corporal and police sergeant. As you know, the city council sets all job specifications for jobs within the city and our request tonight is to up- our request tonight is to update the specifications for those two particular job classifications. The Police Department is currently undertaking an internal promotional process for the middle management, line-level supervisor positions of corporal sergeant, and during that process, as we reviewed the job specifications, we found that they had not been updated since 2008. Our goal is to update these change, these job specifications, as the Police Department has gone through many changes over the past few years, including changes in command structure, titles, and job duties. Our goal with these job specification updates is to draw greater distinctions between the positions of corporal, sergeant, and lieutenant, especially as they relate to each other in the chain of command. For example, we found in our old job specifications that sergeant was reporting to a captain level. That's no longer the case, as we've got a lieutenant position, and so, it was just a goal to update and modernize that. Some of the changes we did make was, we're mandating that both job specifications have 60 college units to apply for the position. However, what we found was that the corporal position required in AA and the sergeant didn't, this just didn't make sense, it was a little incongruous, so we're looking to clean that language up and make it a little bit more, give it more continuity. We're also removing the prohibition on being on probation to apply for the position. We feel this, we feel this will broaden the candidate pool. We hire a lot of highly qualified laterals from other agencies who would otherwise be qualified for the position. They'd still naturally be on probationary status, but it allows them the opportunity to apply for the position. Finally, we feel that updating and modernizing these specifications will bring continuity and clarity to the job specs, promoting internal promotions, reducing barriers, and supporting recruitment, retention, and morale for the department. So, with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong?
I think this is outstanding.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to clarify, so is it adding responsibilities to each of these classifications?
I would say, well, and normally, in this instance, council members would receive the redlined version of the changes. What we found as we started going through that, that the entire document would have just been redlined, so we started over with a fresh document. I think it's more accurate to say we're bringing greater clarity and distinction to the specific job functions. Some will get more, the, some specifications are being moved from sergeant to lieutenant, for example, since that's a new position, but it'll just offer more clarity and distinction between the ranks.
Okay, and is it just these two that need to be updated?
No. This is the ones we have before us as we're conducting a promotional process. Our expectation is that we'll be working with our Human Resources Department to bring you more job specifications throughout the department, and perhaps throughout the city for update, as we, as we encounter those job specifications during hiring and promotional processes.
And then, there's no cost affect?
There's no, no cost associated.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
We do need a motion on that one.
Motion.
Sorry, I'll move.
Second.
I'll take a roll call vote. Mayor Landau, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Kalmick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Still, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Councilmember Senical, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries five votes, yes.
Okay, there is no public hearing, there is no unfinished continued business, no new business, so at this time, I would like to adjourn the city council to Monday, February 10, 2025, at 5:30 PM, to meet in closed session if deemed necessary. Good night.